I don't have anyone to remember in the moment of silence tonight, but there's a little boy in Newburyport that's going to turn nine years old tomorrow. Name is Tommy Bell of Washington Street, so I just want to wish him a happy birthday and hope he has a good day from the city council. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City President, roll call for the city council meeting July 7, 2017.
Councilor Earls?
Present.
Councilor Agarman?
Here.
Councilor Junta?
Present.
Councilor Tanta?
Present.
Councilor Vogel?
Present.
Councilor Zee?
Present.
Councilor Cameron?
Here.
Councilor Connell is absent.
Councilor Cronin?
Present.
Councilor Devlin is absent.
Council President O'Brien?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. President.
Any late final items?
There are no per se late file items. There are several items on the councilor's desk that I'd like to acknowledge. One is the notice of a special city council meeting Thursday, July 13th, here in this chamber at 6:30. And there are two descriptions. One, we're called a public benefit restriction for CPC project number four, which is the Cushing House. And coupled with that is the preservation restriction agreement. You'll see the first page. It's a 14-page document. I didn't print it out on your desk, and that is it.
Hello, I'm Amantha Moore. I live at 10 North Atkinson Street in Newburyport, and I'm here again to talk about the CPC, CPA, Central Congregational Church, of which I am a member, has applied for funding through that, and it has gone to the Finance Committee and been approved for partial funding for that project. And I just wanted to state our appreciation for that. Many years ago, when the CPA was enacted, just prior to that, I don't even know how many years ago that was, but that was the one thing I've ever gone door-to-door campaigning for. So it's very satisfying to see all of the worthwhile projects that that commission has approved for this spending year and previous years as well. Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. Jenny Donahue here with the Newburyport Commission on Disabilities. Just here briefly to let you know that the commission absolutely supports the transfer to finish the project up at Marches Hill connecting to the rail trail. I know that's going to go to committee, but I just wanted to let you all know that we are absolutely in favor of that transfer to have that project get finished up and have access for everybody. And that's it. Thanks.
Good evening, councilors. I just want to piggyback on what Jenny Donahue just said and encourage you all to vote for the transfer for the change order for Marches Hill. As you may or may not know, our neighborhood came together, I live at 27 High Street, in very short order, to come up with a new plan. We worked with a number of members in the city and have a consensus on what we think is a much improved plan for that Marches Hill. So I'm happy to answer any questions later on when you're ready, but thank you for your time.
There's one other person who wants to speak, Stephen Conley, but not on the agenda item. Usually we don't have it. If you don't, it's not on our agenda item, you can't speak, but it's up to the council. I say no, but it's up to the council. I'm just one vote.
Motion to waive the rules and give the gentleman two minutes, please, Mr. President.
Second.
Councilor Earls?
Yes.
Councilor Agarman?
No.
Councilor Junta?
Yes.
Councilor Tanta?
Yes.
Councilor Vogel?
No.
Councilor Zee?
Yes.
Councilor Cameron?
Yes.
Councilor Cronin?
Yes.
Council President O'Brien?
No.
Leading six, motion passes.
He can speak.
I just wanted to, I was wondering when the council will anticipate voting on the letter we requested that you write to the NRC about having a hearing held for first responders so they can respond on whether they believe that the Seabrook nuclear plant can be evacuated during the summer months, including July 4th and Labor Day. But also like to consider writing a letter to Attorney General Healy, who I've met with twice already. And she said to me last time I spoke to her that I really perked her interest on my concerns about the Seabrook plant. And I just want to know when the council will anticipate possibly voting on writing a letter. That's all. Thank you.
Evening, councilors. Council President O'Brien, members of the city council, there are some attachments that were supposed to be a part of the update that Paul has just passing out for you today. To start with, the intermodal facility garage, we, all the documents for the 1.5 million have been filed with the Federal Transportation by the June 30th deadline, and we have been informed that they're working on an expedited review. At your special city council meeting this Thursday, we will present you with an updated packet, including the budget, construction bond, our final purchase and sale agreement. Again, a reminder that this document is not public until signed. Air quality testing, communication on John Burke's scope of work on parking, and there might be a couple other documents that will be included in that. NED is looking for a signature on the purchase and sale agreement by the 15th of August, but we have been instructed by the Federal Transportation Administration not to sign the document until their review is complete. Andy Port has been working closely with Desmond Associates to move the design process forward, and we're making good progress and are close to 100% design, incorporating the changes requested by Butters, the Planning Board, Historic Commission, and City Council. The Planning Board approved the garage plan on July 5th, the list of special conditions, including lighting, facade, stormwater management, traffic impact study, including flow and management, including traffic patterns during construction, air quality testing, no bus idling, and a reduction of a minimum of 100 parking spaces off the waterfront. Please see the attached summary that Paul just passed out to you from Andy Port. Again, please recall the main objective in building the garage is to remove parking from the waterfront. We will schedule our next Intermodal Advisory Group meeting in mid-August. The Plum Island Hydrant Replacement Contract, as you are aware, the bids came in higher than expected at 2.9 million, and we are fortunate to have the $4.75 million settlement funds to continue this critical project. The Water and Sewer Commission, as you know, meets Wednesday night at 5:00 p.m. at Perry Way with the City Council Public Utilities Subcommittee to review the low bid and vote on whether to approve moving the project forward. I can emphasize how important it is to change out the poor quality metals that were used in the initial construction out on Plum Island on the water side and to ensure adequate water and fire suppression for the residents out on Plum Island. The air vac system, they're working on the final phase of alarming the system, which is underway with support from air vac, and they're coordinating with our SCADA systems. Under the wastewater treatment facility, the Methuen Construction has mobilized and temporary order controls are in place as the construction proceeds. The old organic biofilter was dismantled today and is temporarily being stored in the old tree dump at Crow Lane for the next two weeks or so. We will, we're working on trying to get someone to get it out of there as quickly as possible. We had promised after the mulch fire we had, what, five years ago, that we would not be putting more of that type of product there, but it's just a temporary until we can get it out of there. Biweekly progress meetings will continue throughout the course of this contract, which will be completed around January, but I am very pleased to report that there's been no odor issues reported in many months, and there were no odor issues reported during the changeover to the temporary odor controls. Stormwater and drainage projects, we have received notification from the EPA that they have delayed implementation of the MS4 permits for one year so we can hold off the, you know, the need to have that training with the council we had talked about at the end of August. We can wait a couple months to do that. Phillips Drive, we've met with residents who were representing the neighborhood last week. They prepared a very comprehensive document on the drainage issues they have been enduring since Cherry Hill was built, and I believe all of the council should have received that packet. Please let Paul know if you have not received it, and we will be sure that you get a copy of that. We have an internal meeting next week to begin to outline a plan and a strategy to address these issues, beginning with sending a camera down the water lines to assess the structural status. The Hale Street water main update, paving starts tomorrow through the 21st, weather permitting for paving, please see the attached notice, and additional information is up on the city website and will continue to be throughout the course of completing that. Tomorrow, we are meeting with the Waterfront Trust, the NRA settlers, as the city's working group. Our focus tomorrow is on financing and revenues for the Waterfront Trust as they assume property for the entire central waterfront and user fees under Article 97. We continue to address outstanding issues, including things like filled tidelands. We're waiting for their attorney to give us some information, the NRA's attorney, by the end of August, and all tenant abutter agreements in the East Lot cleanup, the ALU, Ferry Wharf Way, Lower Custom Heights Way, and the rail trail location are some of the things that we are continuing to talk about. The rail trail in Marches Hill, as you know, we, a group of us met out there to talk about the changes that were needed in the final design, and that was a result of the former owner who lived adjacent to that entrance to the rail trail under High Street, which resulted in our lack of access to this area, if you will, and in order to ensure we had handicap accessibility, it ended up looking the way it did. As we have a new owner in that home who has been more than willing to work with us around the redesign, and we're using the balance from the stadium project to be able to change the design so that everyone is in agreement with this. And I understand there was some feeling of pressure to vote on that tonight. There is no reason to do that. Jordy's on vacation for the next several weeks, and that at your next meeting in August, he will be present and be able to do a subcommittee on budget and finance with you and be able to answer any outstanding questions you have. And the project will obviously continue to go forward and will be redesigned because I have signed off on that change order. Master plan, there are many items in subcommittees and many meetings that have been required of all of you, and I appreciate how hard all of you have been working over the last many months. And our planning board also has a very, very full agenda, but I'm asking that the master plan, please rise up a little bit on your priority list so that we can get this completed because the zoning changes and zoning rewrite really is dependent on completing the master plan. And, you know, the really, Community Opportunities Group, who's been working on the zoning rewrite, is also anxious to move that process forward. Emergency management, each year before Yankee Homecoming, we bring, our emergency management director brings together Public Safety, the Antioch Hospital, the Coast Guard, Harbor Master, Health Department, city staff, DPS, and we work on a scenario that we don't know until we arrive tomorrow morning and begin to walk through a tabletop exercise in terms of a particular event that could happen during the festival. And we've been doing it every year, and it gives us a sense of being well-prepared for the festivals when they come. We also had a meeting with Yankee Homecoming today and discussed all of the particulars about trash and traffic and porta-potties and all of those kinds of things. The Woody Old Bridge Working Group met today, as you know, probably six to eight weeks ago, there was an article in the paper talking about one of the piers that failed because of the concrete and an $8 million error, and that they have to go back and redo that. So they gave us an update on where they are. Now, the project completion date has been pushed out to July of next year, so it's another year. They will be do, they're working in double shifts, six days a week. They also are planning on doing some demolition over the next several months and on several piers, which will take many, many weeks to do each pier, and they will assure us that they will give us the data when they're starting that, and we'll make sure that that gets posted up on the website for those abutters next to the bridge. Downtown merchants meeting, Councilor Agarman coordinated this meeting last week, was well attended by both merchants and community members, and I think began a very important dialogue about festivals and events and impact and traffic and street closures, and I believe that this is the first of several meetings that will happen going forward to talk about that. Last week, the, I had the pleasure of hosting the mayors from across the state through the Mass Municipal Association Mayor's Meeting, and we had the opportunity to have Governor Baker as our keynote speaker, and he was able to discuss with the mayors without media, which is always a nice forum, the FY '18 budget, revenues, healthcare, opioids, he's sitting on a national task force, what's happening in DC, and as you probably all have heard that the legislature has passed the FY '18 budget, and there were no cuts to, at this point, until the governor signs it to local aid or to Chapter 70 school funding. I wanted to bring your attention to a letter that was sent out today by Superintendent Bakara, which is fairly disturbing, and it's attached in your packet. She was informing them of a very disturbing social media app called Blue Whale Challenge, where kids are encouraged to take more dangerous challenges over a 50-day period, inviting friends and others to join in, and you start with a scary movie, then it moves on to, you know, to daring you to cut yourself, and then ultimately by day 50, you're supposed to commit suicide. This is very, very disturbing, and I'm really glad that our superintendent is on top of these kinds of things, so please, as those of you as parents and friends and neighbors, please be sure we'll get this posted up on my blog too, to be sure that everyone has access to this information. Thank you.
Thank you.
The consent agenda this evening consists of the following. The approval of the minutes for the June 26th, 2017 meeting. There's one transfer, number 40, revisions to Marches Hill pathway connecting to rail trail. That's to be referred to budget and finance. There's a number of communications. First communication is number 84, Woodya Regional Boat Tech, 2017 to '18 assessment. Has to be received and filed. Communication 85, A-Frame application, Wells Co Realty, that's to go to license and permits. Likewise, A-Frame, Plum Island Coffee Roasters, again to go to license and permits. Communication 87, Walk Against Domestic Violence, October 1st, 2017, to public safety. Communication 88, Newburyport Half Marathon, October 22nd, 2017, public safety. And communication 89, Merrimack River Rescue Society, 25th Anniversary, September 23rd, 2017, again to go to public safety. There's one appointment. Appointment number 49, Sandy Freed, 44 Ferry Road, to the Water Sewer Commission until 8/1/2022. And that is the consent agenda this evening.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Well, I'd like to pull transfer number eight, transfer number 40, I mean.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
President.
Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
President.
This is point of order. There's no vote on pulling something from the consent agenda. No. No mistake. Move on to the regular agenda. Transfer number four. I guess what we got, the mayor's update.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? For the transfer 40.
Transfer 40 is revisions to Marches Hill pathway connecting to rail trail. There's a memorandum to the council from Jordy Vining. It is a transfer from Newburyport High School Stadium Capital Project, $74,153. Same amount would go to the rail trail Phase II Capital Project. And there are, there's a plan with photos attached.
Council Cronin?
Motion to refer to budget and finance.
Second.
Council Cronin?
I stand totally in favor of this, but a bit confused. I have no problem with moving this to budget and finance, as I just said, but we have a special city council meeting on Thursday, and this is one of the three agenda items on there. And I'm just a little concerned about Butters and other people understanding that, A, we have a special city council meeting, and B, that this is or may be discussed.
Council Tanta?
Yeah, I'm entirely responsible for that. I did that in case we needed to get the funding now to get this going. I understand we don't, so we're not going to bring it out on Thursday. If we had, I would have brought it before budget and finance on Wednesday night, but we didn't post it, so that's not going to happen.
If the president is okay, I'll just remove that from the agenda item and go to the posting and remove it at the posting.
Thank you. Motion sent to budget and finance? Yes.
Yes.
I moved.
Second. And I seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, there we go. Communication 79.
Communication 79 starts with an emergency preamble because it is a request for an A-Frame, and I believe it's July 10th, and that's submitted by Councilor Vogel.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the selling season is before us, this merchant has asked that we pick up her, request for A-Frame sign, actually, a variance, if you will, to move it out a little bit. And the next two pieces, we'll pick that up in a moment, so I ask you, Vogel, if they were preamble, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
President, we need a roll call on emergency. Is that, we ever?
I don't think the charter requires, needs a two-thirds vote.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Close?
It says two-thirds. Communication 79.
As mentioned, Communication 79 is the application itself.
Why would they move to receive and file?
I'll rescind my motion.
Councilor Junta?
I would imagine we would need to approve this application.
Yes. If we receive and file, they can't do it. Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Council Cronin?
Questioning, this is like a variance situation. Should we know where it's going? And shouldn't it be on the application somewhere?
Council Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason that I suggested we receive and file is because we acted on the letter that came from the applicant last meeting, so we've already, license and permits has already acted on it, and met with the applicant. So it seems to me as though, when we did meet on it last week, and we talked about it, rather, when it came in, it asked us to declare if the paperwork was actually in place, and he assured me that it had, so I thought that this was simply providing the paperwork.
Was that the same clerk?
That was the same clerk.
Yes.
So we acted on the letter.
Right. Could I make a suggestion? It should be on the application itself because, as I understand, it was not in front of her store. It was to be out on the sidewalk because she's at 1R, 1 rear. She wants it at 1 Water. And where it says "location," that should say 1 Water. And I think, with all due respect, it does need to be approved, even though you approved the letter. One could argue you approved it by the letter, but I, I think the intent was to do an emergency preamble to get this approved, to allow it to happen now. On the location, 1 Water Street, which is, should be written in here.
All right.
If that's clear.
Do we need to officially amend that?
Yeah.
Do we need to officially amend this?
I would approve with the amendment that it states 1 Water Street.
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye.
Close? As amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Close?
And 83.
Did we just approve this application?
Mm-hmm. You're going uphill when you say this coast.
83 again is a similar situation. Emergency preamble submitted by Councilor Cronin, and it relates to a block party application that would be on the corner of Congress Street and Buck Street slash Olive, August 5th, which is before our August 14th meeting, which is why it's here.
All right. Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? All the applications?
Motion approved?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you. Move on to appointments.
There's one appointment, second reading, Kimberly Logue, that's appointment number 48, 18 Woodman Way, Unit Number Three, to the Housing Authority until 5/1/2022.
Motion approved?
Second.
Roll call?
Roll call to approve appointment number 48. Councilor Earls?
Yes.
Councilor Agarman?
Yes.
Councilor Junta?
Yes.
Councilor Tanta?
Yes.
Councilor Vogel?
Yes.
Councilor Zee?
Yes.
Councilor Cameron?
Yes.
Councilor Cronin?
Yes.
Council President O'Brien?
Since I serve on the board with Kimberly, and she does a great job, I'll vote present.
Motion passes. First order is number 42. It's related to Independent Street, intersection of Southbound Drivers at the intersection of Independent and Liberty. It is asking for a stop sign.
Motion referred to public safety.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Go ahead. Run to order 43.
Order 43 is an order of taking, temporary and permanent easements on the West End Sewer Access Road Project. There's a cover letter from Mayor Holliday. There's the actual order of taking that describes the perpetual easements, temporary easements, and there's a Schedule A. Shall I read the owners affected, Mr. President?
Yes, please.
19 Ever Drive, Cook, 22 Finnegan Way, 24 Finnegan Way, Neil Wilson, 233 Stury Avenue, Robert and Don Apostle, 235 Stury Avenue, Doctors Giassuden and Nasia, 237 Stury Avenue, Barbara Chambers and Jeffrey Monahan. There's a plan, several plans attached, and an aerial view.
Motion for planning development and public utilities?
Discussion. Give us any updates on this, if they have any questions.
I'm here for questions on the city engineer.
Does anyone have any questions on the city engineer?
Just, yeah, I do. Go ahead. John Eric, what's the timeframe on this? So our next full city council meeting is until August, I think.
We actually started this process last August, and it takes many, many months to get all the abutters to come to consensus. So it's not the end of the world if we wait till August. I was hoping for one reading tonight, just simply so that we could put the project out to construction. It's relatively straightforward, but if you choose to go to committee, I'll be there to answer any questions you have. You have to.
Well, we actually have, we just took something off our special meeting for Thursday. If we put this on, we could have the first reading. Would that be helpful?
Thursday would be great.
And then we'd have the second reading in August, and then it would be done.
That would be, that would be appreciated. Much appreciated.
Do we have the preamble on Thursday night? Since this is my warden, I know most of the people who have agreed to this. Since this is my warden, I know most of the people who have agreed to this. So I'd like to bring emergency preamble to get a voter on so it can.
Tonight?
No, next Thursday night.
Oh, oh, I see, in one night.
And be done with it, doing one reading, have emergency preamble Thursday night. You'll be here for questions.
I'll be here.
Mr. President, I don't know if a, this emergency doesn't waive the need for two readings, though. Just allows us to, it's not going to be new on Thursday.
It's just an order. It's just an order. One reading, right?
Yes, correct.
So I think if we, I'm sorry, I may, Mr. President. I think if we take it in tonight.
Yep.
And we could even have a public utilities and planning meeting at 7:15. At 7:15, we have time. We can notice it tomorrow, and we can vote it without any emergency.
The special meeting's at 6:30.
I'm sorry, at 6:00. Okay. So we could do it all in one night.
Right.
Without a preamble.
And there's enough notice.
Yep.
Is that okay with people?
Any objections?
It's like John Eric said, he's been working this for over a year. I remember attending meetings last year, and we had about half of them done. Half of them accepted, and there were a couple more on Longfellow and wherever, but in Everett. So glad to see it finally done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So the motion was deferred to planning development and public utilities.
And public utilities.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And we'll add that to the agenda.
So, Mr. President, if I might, so my to do is to add that to the agenda for Thursday night.
Yes.
And to post two meetings.
Joint meeting.
Joint meeting at 6 o'clock.
Of our two committees, yeah.
Public utility and planning and development. One agenda item.
Okay, you want us to move, run to committee items.
Counselor Tontar? Motion to remove Communication 32.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Motion to remove Transfer 37.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve.
Tell them what it is first, please.
President, this is a transfer of $47,000 is a result of the fact that installing the new LED lights has been delayed when the fiscal year '17 budget was put together. We thought that the installation of the new LED lights was going to occur earlier. It didn't. So the LED lights are more cost efficient than the current lights, and so we need more money, and that's why there's a request for a $47,000 transfer.
Thank you.
Committee voted 3-0 to recommend approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay, next.
Motion to remove Transfer 38, school expenses, to school lunch.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve.
Second, go ahead.
This is a transfer that we have faced over the past couple of years. Just so everyone is clear about this, there was $30,000 in the school budget set aside in case the school lunch budget went over what was originally, excuse me, cost more than break even. And so although it has been reduced over the past couple of years, there still is a deficit. The total deficit is 42,000. That requires the 30,000 that had been set aside, been transferred, and additional 12,000 be transferred to cover the costs of the lunch program. The city, the school department will receive $15,000 back from the food lunch provider in the next fiscal year, which is a penalty because they did not come in even. So the committee voted 3-0 to approve.
Counselor Ronan?
Well, Counselor from Ward 4 is 100% accurate. It kind of dawned on me right after the meeting that we're actually providing the schools with $15,000 worth of Chartwell money, and there's no provision for us to get it back when they get reimbursed. And I would like to make a friendly amendment to say that the city and your report should be reimbursed, the money, once the bill is paid.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Counselor Zied?
I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm still confused by this. So this transfer, I tried to look up these accounts, so 51158 and 49700. Did the school committee have any input or vote on this, or are these two city accounts? Because I'm not able to follow. Is school expenses the singular line item in the budget from the FY '17, the whole thing? And school lunches is a separate one? Because when I look at the FY '17 budget, I can't find either of these lines, so I'm just confused as to what our involvement is, and if the school committee had any discussion or input, or if they're, I don't, this is my first transfer like this, so I'm a little bit lost. Can you help?
Go ahead.
Counselor Zied, so what this is, this is a transfer from the school budget, which is the budget that the city council approves. It's one singular account within the city's operating budget, which the school committee has complete control over. They did, in that budget, allow for a $30,000 contingency, should they need it in the school year, to be transferred into the school lunch program, which operates through a special revolving fund, which is the 2249700. So as it turned out, of course, they did need the $30,000, and they needed another 12 on top of that. So that's why the total is $42,000 going into the school lunch revolving fund.
Have you ever approved this before?
Yes, we've approved transfers like this a couple times in the past several years. They really started to happen once the new regulations came in place, where we were mandated to put in place healthier food and that type of thing. The program became more expensive. So the council needs to approve all inter-fund transfers, while you don't need to approve any transfers within the school budget itself. This comes to you because it's going outside of the school budget into a different fund.
Into a revolving fund.
Yes.
So just one follow-up. So on the revolving fund order we passed at our last meeting, where we reauthorized the revolving funds, which fund is it?
This is not a 53E and a half revolving fund. It's a special school lunch revolving fund, which lives under its own statute, which does not require city council approval to set it up.
Okay, so do you have?
Oh, you have to prove this.
Has it been in the red for the, what, it's the last five years? Do you know off the top of your head? Has it been?
We've got.
Nancy Lysak handed it out on, at the last committee meeting. I apologize, I don't have that tonight.
Counselor Tontar?
Fiscal year '13, there was revenue loss because they had surplus in the account of $98,361. Fiscal year '14, they needed revenue added of $60,000. Fiscal year '15, revenue added of $50,000. Fiscal year '16, revenue added of $40,000. And fiscal year '17, they budgeted $30,000, expecting, anticipating the possibility of it not breaking even, and the total overage is 42,000.
I'm sorry, my last one, just while I'm going. So the Chartwell's contract, I presume, drives this? Is the Chartwell's contract a flat rate, so regardless of usage, you owe the money, and this is being taken against the revenues, meaning students paying for lunch? And this is the shortfall, essentially, between those two numbers?
That's my understanding.
Yes.
With the food service company? Okay, thank you.
Counselor Ronan?
Through the President, to the auditor, is, this wasn't articulated on, during the budget, but is this transfer of $42,000 not city funds at all? Are there city funds in there, or is this all out of the school budget?
It's all coming out of the school budget line item that the city council and mayor approved last.
But it's.
It's within that total figure.
Yeah, to be clear, it's on the, on the school side.
Correct, that's correct.
I would withdraw my amendment, then.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, motion, Counselor Agnew.
Well, I, okay, but I just want to make sure, so what happens to the $15,000 when it comes back from Chartwell? Does it go back into the revolving fund? Okay, he nodded, so we're good.
Let me guess, I guess. Thank you. Counselor Zied?
Because this was not anywhere in our FY '18 numbers, what's the budget for '18? I mean, it sounds like we've been off several years in a row, 60, 50, 40, 42, so we're hemorrhaging cash, so to say. I mean, if you budget for 30, and your shortfall's 42, that's kind of a bad balance, is it not?
But 30 overage.
30 over.
Yes.
30 over.
They most certainly did.
So 12 over.
What's the FY '18 look like?
20, 20 over.
We budgeting for 20 over?
School department.
Just being hopeful?
No, they, there have been changes, Mr. President, well, you know, I don't go to the school system, but there have been changes, we're told, in that, I guess, when the nutrition requirements were put in place, the food was not very popular among the students, so is that an understatement, Mr. President? No, so the, there have been changes, they're doing better at it in their sense, and I think that the deficit will fall.
So what's the total budget for this revolving fund?
Oh, God, what was it? Is it 300? I got it, hold it. That's about 22222. $135,000, is that right? The school department has this, they never tell the, put the units on these, they have a number of meals. I think about $35,000 meals. I think the total year-to-date on meals is 135,451.
What was that number?
All right, not to beat a dead horse, but yeah, that is the number, 135,481. But then you have to add the 42,000 to that to get to the break even point.
Yep.
Just the last couple. So how often do we renegotiate Chartwell's? Annually? Three-year contracts? Five years?
Three.
Sorry?
Triannual.
Okay, when is it up next? Does anybody know?
Two years.
Oh, two more years are left?
Just got renewed.
Okay. And my only other question is, the decision to use the school budget to balance it, was there any, what was the logic? Just because it's the most closely associated? Were any other funding sources considered, maybe using free cash or something like that? I just want to understand the train of thought.
The school committee looked at this, and they had obviously allowed for the 30,000 within their budget, which they felt it was, you know, the schools, you know, burdened to allow for some cushion there. The additional 12, the superintendent, they had, you know, been careful with spending towards the latter part of the year, and they were able to come up with the additional 12,000 within the budget. Otherwise, they, we probably would have been looking at free cash.
Counselor Johnson?
I wanted everybody to have a chance at a bite at the apple on this one. So as the Chair of Joint Ed, I just want to let folks know, in Joint Ed, we've actually talked about this numerous times over the last two years. I think we're going on four years of losing money on school lunches since about 2013. Again, from the changes in the federal program, then they loosened up the federal program and got a little better. There's discussion now about loosening up the program again. Before they renewed the contract with Chartwell at Joint Ed, we discussed, you know, should you leave the federal program and go on your own? Should you get another vendor other than Chartwell? Or should you just not use a private vendor at all and hire somebody from the community or, you know, somebody outside of a private vendor to actually run your cafeterias? And we threw that all at the school committee, and we really peppered them on, you know, what's going on here? Because this is a program that should be self-sustainable. But one year, we lost almost $100,000. And every year, we grind over the budget about how do we get more money to the schools? And we have, you know, we have a program here that could break even or even make money, and it's losing money every single year. Unfortunately, you know, the school committee decided to go with Chartwell's, and they continue to make changes every year to try to get to break even. But we're four years into losing money, and I haven't done the math, but it's hundreds of thousands of dollars that we could be putting towards the students and not just throwing down the hole with food services. So just my two cents.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Counsel. If they cut off the broccoli with cheese pizza, it'd probably help.
I have to ask, so this school lunch revolving funds outside of the statute that governs the other ones, are there any other funds like that that are, that are, or is a school lunch really an island by itself?
Oh, no, there's others. There's a student activity fund, there's an athletic revolving fund, there's a transportation revolving fund. I'd be happy to send you the complete list.
Do they have spending limits, just like the traditional, the ones that we statutorily control here in the city council? Does the school committee review them manually and authorize them? You know, is it?
I can say the school committee is definitely reviewing them on a regular basis. They don't have annual spending limits per se. However, depending on the fund, there are limits on what the fund balance can be, and each one has particular rules on what the money can be spent on. I'd be happy to send those to you.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
In further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Anything else?
Motion to remove Transfer 39, fiscal year general budget contingency, 20,000 to police salary officers.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Yes, the committee voted to approve this 3 to nothing. We received comparables from the Human Resources Department, and sergeant, this is, this is just for the superior officers bargaining unit, and, which is sergeants and lieutenants, and salaries were relatively low in, compared to the comparables, and it seems that this increase is warranted.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Next.
Motion to remove Order Number 41, which is the CPC.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Tontar?
Motion to amend.
Yes.
I would like to amend, move to amend Project Number 4 to include the public benefit statement as well as the preservation restriction agreement.
Second.
This is the project for the carriage house, and to repair the windows, do historic repair on the windows. There was concern at the committee meeting that there was not a public benefit as stipulated in the Massachusetts Constitution, and so we wanted to make sure that that was the case. So the statement of the, we had thought, we'd been told that the preservation restriction had already been there, but the one we received today is dated this year. So it, you know, it seems to apply, and that is a benefit from, that we're getting in return. And secondly, the public benefit is, the museum is open to the public, Newburyport residents do not pay, and they do run school programs through the, through the project. So I'd like to amend to include those two.
Second. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Pose.
Motion to exclude Projects 3 and 18.
Second. Between what, 18?
3 and 18. Counsel Cameron has, is. Counselor Cameron has, is recusing himself on these two, so I'd like to consider all but Three and 18, and he can participate in that, and then we will do Three and 18 separately.
Thank you. Counselor Conan?
Motion to amend Project Number 11, Clipper City Rail Trail Three Design.
Sorry, point of order, so we voted on the other amendment?
I'm sorry.
You're amending the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. To take that one separately.
If I might, Mr. President, so I've got a motion to exclude Projects Three and Eight that's been voted on.
Three and 18.
Three and 18.
Well, that's on the floor.
Yeah, we didn't vote on it.
We did not vote on it.
We didn't vote on it.
I thought he said so voted. I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we voted on it. Okay, so... Counselor Conan?
And then, now there's a motion approved on the floor, but there's a motion amended.
Motion to amend Project Number 11, Clipper City Rail Trail Three, Phase Three. The amendment would read that all design monies would consider designs in the city of Newburyport only.
Second.
Discussion on that?
Just a point of order, I don't know if we could take that when we take that line?
No, he wants to take those all together.
I'll take them all.
He wants to take Three and 18 together.
Okay.
That's what he just, that's what we voted on earlier. So this is, so if anyone's got any amendments they want to put on these, now's the time to do it.
Do it now.
Mr. President, if I may.
Counselor Cronin's trying to do, I think.
Could I just, as for, Counselor Cronin, could you repeat that, I had all design monies?
All design monies associated with Clipper City Rail Trail, Phase Three Design, shall be for the city of Newburyport's portion, and nothing outside of the boundaries of the city of Newburyport.
Now, a second, correct?
Yeah, I second it, yeah.
Counselor Vogel?
Mr. President, I, that's an interesting amendment, I'm curious as to how that would, what your thoughts are on how, if I may, how that would happen directly. There certainly are connected, how would it happen, the planning department, how would it happen that they would plan only as far as our border and then stop, I'm not sure how it would be implemented, I'm just curious as to what you're thinking on that.
Counselor Allen?
Yeah, I'll take that one, because it's in my ward. Yeah, I didn't catch this in the earlier hearing, but if you read the description, it refers to the municipal road corridor, and we had testimony and made sure that this had to do with State Street, where Parker Street crosses State Street. So, that's the intersection where the gentleman was killed in the last year, and it's kind of a loose end from the Chapter 40R as well. We had amended the Chapter 40R, Smart Growth Districts, to say that until such time as there was a safe pedestrian crossing there, an owner at the northeast corner, most notably the Kelly Hardware, would not be able to use the 40R, because we didn't want to encourage dense development in a place where you cannot walk safely. So, I applaud the amendment, and I hope you'll vote for it, because $75,000 is really going to be necessary to design that specific crossing, and the Newbury boundary doesn't come up until you get to the, past the cemetery, so, the back end of Oak Hill Cemetery, and then the rest of it will just be more mundane. What we're talking about here on city land is, excuse me, city jurisdiction is probably a traffic signal and a pedestrian crossing with a button, and that's easily going to eat up 75,000.
Counselor Vogel?
I'm sorry, if I could just follow up, I mean, I'm all in favor of keeping our money in where it belongs. I'm just curious, I thought that the rail trail crosses Parker, basically heads down to the train station. Are we talking about going along Parker? This is what's unclear to me, I'm all in favor of this.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, you know, there's probably, Counselor Cronin and I, because we share this boundary, know the map better, you're right, it's a good question. So Phase Three, if there had been a map attached to this, it would actually be essentially from Parker Street, the old Owens, Illinois facility, Mark Ritchie, Mark Ritchie nowadays, it's from there, going directly across and right in front of the district courthouse, which used to be a street, and that was the old supermarket, and then going right to the Kelly's Hardware. So the Newbury portion, don't think about the Newbury portion where the train station is, that's not in play anyway, it's just at the other end, Easterly End, when it then hooks into the end of Phase Two. That's where money would not be spent under this amendment for design, priority would be on this tricky intersection at the Rotary.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor?
Yes, well, partially my concern is what my Ward Two colleague has just clearly articulated, and that is, we have a dangerous intersection, we've had several meetings with Mass DOT, the courthouse, that the Ward Two Counselor and I have been involved in, but added to that, that the present terminus of the Rail Trail Two is in another jurisdiction, and we can't even get them to build adequate parking. And I just don't think that the taxpayers of Newburyport are the greater Newburyport bank of dad.
Counselor Zede?
I'd like to, since we're going to roll them up, I just have some questions about Project Number Eight, but I don't want to...
First.
Okay.
Is it amendment?
On the amendment. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Counselor Zede?
Project Number Eight, Open Space Reserve Fund, since we're going to roll them up, my first question is, and perhaps the finance director...
To, in second.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I thought we were going to, do we have a motion to approve all except for the ones that are excluded?
You want to make an amendment, what's your amendment?
Actually, I don't have any amendments yet, I just have questions.
Okay.
To start anyways.
Okay.
Open Space Reserve Fund, for the finance director, Mr. President, how, what is the current balance in the destination, I believe, according to this, it says Preservation Open Space Reserve Fund, how much does the reserve fund have?
529,900 dollars.
Pre, before this, this...
Is it pre, no, after.
After, so it says 429 right now. And my other question is, what information did the CPA commission have on this in order to deliberate and make this decision? I'm just a little concerned, it's a little bit open-ended, and, I mean, $530,000 is in there, how long has it been in there, obviously, we have other needs, there were other projects that got bumped off, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, you know, this money, I think the idea, the theory behind the CPA is to take money and do projects that are near and dear and important to neighborhoods and open space and historic and the other sort of silos that they put in, so, maybe this was discussed in committee, could shed some light for me?
Chris Jones?
Mike Dissetz here. We do have a motion on the floor to approve. Yeah, that was first motion.
Yeah, the chairman of CPA indicated that, that there were a number of potential projects, however, there were confidentiality issues, and so they didn't, they did not get more specific than that. The CPA committee felt that the $100,000 was warranted, but, you know, again, they didn't talk about the specifics. Mike, there you are, I didn't know you were here. Do you have anything to add? Yeah, please.
As the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, and also sit as Chair of the Open Space Committee, the CPA allows us to either appropriate or reserve for future projects in the various categories. In any year where we don't have an active, alive opportunity to get control of either fee interest in land or a conservation restriction, et cetera, we attempt to put money aside for a time in the future when those opportunities come around. And as you know, the larger tracts of land command significant sums of money, and so, although we would never be able to necessarily save the large amount of money to, let's say, acquire 20 acres, to have that money in a savings account, ready to be able to get to the table and attract other partners, which is the way we are able to accomplish those acquisitions, land trusts, et cetera. In the past, that has worked well, for instance, the land down by Mosley State Park, which was about three years ago now, there's 10 acres down there that we were able to acquire because we had money set aside, and we were able to attract partners to that transaction. Keep in mind that this reserve fund is not for any specific project, it is there so that when a project comes before the CPC again, it has some money that it can put to it, but it then comes back to this body and recommends, based upon the parameters of the particular project, to appropriate from that reserve account to that project.
So is the Open Space Reserve Fund the only reserve fund that the CPC...
Currently, currently it is the only reserve fund, you'll see that in, in one of the, I think it's, it's Three and Eighteen, we had a small 26,000 affordable housing reserve that had been sitting there for a while, and we recommend that it be used so that we can fully fund the requests from the Affordable Housing Trust for their programs. So that was the only other reserve fund that was, currently had a balance in it.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I just want to stand and say that, you know, Number Eight, the Open State Reserve Fund actually means a lot to me, in my ward, I have, I have a ward that's full of a lot of open land, and I'm not sure what the future is, but it's always nice to have some money in the bank just in case.
Anyones have any questions on the other ones, they want to make comments or anything? So the motion is to approve, correct, on the floor? Everything but Three and 18?
As amended.
As amended, without Three and 18.
Right.
Ball call. It's a motion approved CPC Order 41, excluding Three and 18 as amended. Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Motion to approve Projects Three and 18.
Second.
I'm going to recuse myself. Take your time, I'll be relaxing outside.
No game.
Home Run Derby?
Fortune.
Three and 18, was there a second? There was. Any discussion? Ball call. Motion to approve Projects Three and 18, Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron has recused himself, Counselor Connells? Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin is still absent, for the record, Counselor President O'Brien?
Yes.
I'm done, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Chair Mike Dissetz for all the work he and his committee do every year, you know, many, many, many long hours, appreciated by the people of Newburyport, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joint Ed, anything coming?
Well, our next meeting is going to be August 7th, Room 118 in Newburyport High School at 5:30, and I can guarantee you, we'll be talking about the school lunch program. What's that?
August 7th at 5:30?
5:30, yep.
Room 18. Room 18. Bring your own snacks, I guess.
Bring your own snacks, I won't have any good ones.
License and permits?
Motion to remove Communication 79.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to receive them filed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing to report at the moment.
Safety?
Yes, Mr. President, motion to remove Communication 81, muscular dystrophy, fill the boot.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Go ahead.
Motion to remove... Eighty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the bed race.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Utilities?
Yes, Mr. President, motion to remove collectively Orders 37, 38, 39, and 40.
Second.
Do we have those?
Not in the packet.
Did we vote on that?
Second here?
Yeah, I think we have to vote.
They're not in the packet.
No, no, maybe you waive the rules as an order, I don't think those were in the packet.
Motion to waive the rules.
Let's waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules?
Waive the rules, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Motion to approve collectively.
Second.
Drill contractor licenses? Northern Drill, Brenning Construction, Wingman Paving, and Tim Zanelli, excavator.
Yeah, Mr. President. Yeah, I apologize, these didn't make it into the packet, they're just one-page orders, these are very pro forma, and working together with the city clerk, and in turn, Assistant DPS Director Wayne Amaral, all of the paperwork is in place for these four contractors, and I wanted to act on it tonight, so they can get started this summer, so I hope you vote yes.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Just a quick update, I've been trying to keep the council apprised of the Plum Island grant, so it's now closed, and one part of it, besides the public outreach and education and so forth, there was a physical aspect to the grant, and that included installing Mobi mats, as they're called, they're kind of these hard plastic mats that you may have seen at other beaches, $53,000 worth of them or so have been installed on Plum Island, and the folks working on the grant, including Julia Godfritz and our Conservation Administrator, and UNH, and DCR, and the other folks, decided to try and do as much of one or two trails as they could, rather than separating the Mobi mats out. So, if you happen to visit Plum Island and take a walk, there's one at 69th Street, you can use that path, which will take you out to the ocean side of the jetty, or just off of the boardwalk, off the parking lot, there's a trail to the right, and that's Mobi matted. I had the pleasure of doing a site visit about a week and a half ago, and they're quite convenient and nice, and I think have been pretty well received, so, just wanted to invite you all to the beach, and hope you enjoy it. Thank you.
Yes, you will have to, I did actually, I did pay for parking, yes, have my receipt.
Thank you, earlier, Mr. President, we recognized a young boy's birthday, but we have two old boys, we should recognize. Counselor Junta, a couple of days ago it's his birthday, and today is Counselor Vogel's birthday, tomorrow's Counselor Vogel's birthday.
Happy birthday.
And they should sing to each other.
I'm going to motion to adjourn on this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Meeting's adjourned.